The North Smithfield School Committee Meeting of June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Clerk, please follow.
Chair Lombardi.
President.
Mrs. Mayo, here. Mrs. Bada, here. Mr. Cunow.
Here.
Mr. Gilz.
Here.
Move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, united in its whole.
Presentation.
Thank you very much. As you may remember, I am co-chair of the North Smithfield Wellness Advisory Committee along with Rachel Salvatore. But as a little bit of an aside, if you'd like to know more about us, our annual report is included on the Consent Agenda tonight and should, I hope, be approved. We are always looking for new members, so anyone out there, if you are interested in health and wellness, come and join us in the fall. We are a very small committee and we don't make a lot of noise, but many things take place in our school system under our umbrella. And tonight's presentation is an example of that. So joining me will be Karen Weatherill, who is co-director of the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, who will explain what this is all about. And we would like to welcome Coach Jesse Jasper, who I see joining us on Zoom. And Rachel Salvatore, Assistant Principal at North Smithfield Elementary School and my co-chair. And of course, our own Diana Comptoir, School Counselor at NSCS and the Rhode Island Champion for Recess Rocks.
Good evening. I am really excited to be here this evening to present Diana with our two thousand twenty-two Recess Rocks in Rhode Island recess champion. But I do want to recognize Jean Mayo and Rachel Salvatore as chairs of the Wellness Committee because they do a terrific job of really leading that group and encouraging North Smithfield Elementary to become involved in the Recess Rocks in Rhode Island program. So just to give you a little bit of an explanation what that is, we started it, it's a partnership between Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, Playworks of New England and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Rhode Island. We've, in the past seven years, we've worked with over one hundred elementary schools in the state of Rhode Island for free. It's fully funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's actually their largest community investment program that they have. And really designed to work with teams from the elementary schools to ensure that recess is a time of day where all kids will have a safe and an active and healthy and an inclusive, so that all kids will be involved in that recess time. Because we know what the benefits of play are for kids and those social emotional benefits and academic benefits when they get back into the classroom. So before I actually read the certificate and present it to Diana, I do want our coach Jesse, who actually did work with the team at NSCS, to say a few words.
Thank you, Karen. We're really excited to be honoring Diana Comptoir as one of this year's recess champions. Right now, play is more important than ever as a way of supporting social emotional learning as well as physical activity. We really appreciate how North Smithfield has stepped up to the plate and prioritized creating a positive recess environment through the Recess Rocks in Rhode Island program by offering inclusive recess games and promoting student leadership. As the Youth Leadership Program Coordinator, Diana has been instrumental in selecting and training an inclusive and diverse group of fourth grade student leaders or junior coaches. She's introduced new games out at recess and modeled game facilitation for other teachers. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I just wanted to say thank you, Diana, for going above and beyond in promoting safe and healthy play, student engagement, and youth leadership.
Okay, so in recognition of your leadership and commitment to safe, healthy, and inclusive play with the Recess Rocks in Rhode Island program, the recess champions initiative celebrates school professionals to go above and beyond to foster a safe, active, and positive recess environment that nurtures academic and social emotional development in all students. So this certificate of appreciation is proudly presented to Diana Comptoir, the two thousand and twenty-two Recess Rocks in Rhode Island champion from North Smithfield Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank a couple of people. Mrs. Mayo, it's a pleasure really working alongside you as co-chairs on the North Smithfield Wellness Advisory Council. And Diana, congratulations to you. We are so lucky to have you leading the way at NSCS as such an important part of our Recess Rocks team. You're always looking for ways to help our students thrive. Please know how much we appreciate your efforts and recognize your dedication to our school community. As Mrs. Basiani's friends say, she always greets us by name. They love to play shipwreck and concentration ball with you. Miss Clever's youth leaders report they love being a recess coach and teaching other children recess games is so much fun. Thank you, Diana, for ensuring that recess at NSCS is safe, meaningful, fun, and inclusive, and for building our students' leadership skills and confidence. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank Karen Weatherill, co-director of Rhode Island Healthy Kids Coalition. We value your partnership and your commitment to, together, to ensure that North Smithfield schools are healthy, safe, and supportive. Thank you for the work you do in helping our students to learn, grow, and thrive. The resources you provide, including your time, are making us better. We are grateful.
Thank you.
You have no idea.
Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to public comment or community comments, does anybody have anything in regards to any public comments or community comments? Superintendent, you see anybody seeing this phrase?
No, but I got a message that people online can barely hear the audio. Hey, Adam. Could you unmute and tell me what you hear?
Hear you okay, but I have my volume up pretty high.
Hmm. Hang on. It's a mystery. I'll have to up the audio and post. So, sorry about.
It's actually a little bit better, Mike. It's a little bit louder, so.
Because I'm a genius and I fix everything immediately.
That sounds much better.
Thank you. Problem is, no, we can't see Paul. No, that's not good. Something happened to the camera. Thanks, Adam. I blame you.
Take full responsibility.
They can see my coffee. Yeah, we're fine. All right, we're good. Thank you. Well, here we go. Great. Thank you.
Moving on to the Consent Agenda, does anybody have any questions on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to pass the Consent Agenda as presented. Most of them, is there a second?
Second.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving right over to the reports, Superintendent. So outside of wishing everybody a good summer and happy, safe summer and calling attention to all of the summer enrichment opportunities that the school district is running, it's up on Facebook, parents have been notified. We have a busy, active, engaging summer for our kids ahead of us. Thank you to Claire Arnold and her team and all of the Esser Funds that are making this possible. Second thing is that I also have an award to give out to somebody who doesn't know about this and will probably be very upset and embarrassed at the same time. So I received a letter from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. Encloses a certificate from the Rhode Island Board of Education recognizing your school committee member for graduating from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees Leadership Academy. I hope that you can present this award at an upcoming school committee meeting. So yes, I am going to fulfill my obligation and present this to Mr. James Lombardi. And that's it for my report. Thank you. Moving on to item four, which is informational, Superintendent, these are all your appointments. Again, glad we have the Esser Funds. This is all good news. I have seen the emails go across asking people, letting people know about it and asking them to join in, showing the opportunity there. So thank you very much on that. Yeah, and we've had many, many teachers step up for ESY programs, summer school programs, enrichment programs. So again, we're going to have a very busy, active summer. I do, however, want to call out and make notice of Lori Bassett. She is leaving us for three years, maybe longer, all right? But she has been appointed to be Special Ed Director for the Central Falls School Department. So she's leaving North Smithfield Elementary Preschool to become a Special Ed Director in Central Falls. My old stomping ground, great people. She's going to do amazing work there.
Good for her. That's great.
Yes. Moving on to old business, is there anything in regards to the fiscal year twenty-two or twenty-three budget? Lisa?
Nope, nothing new. We just have the budget carrying tomorrow night at the council.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? None. Superintendent, we went a little too quick here. Moving on to new business. So this is, this is a long awaited acknowledgement of our athletes, our chorus members, band members, you know, there's that, that we've been waiting. And what happens is we wait and wait and wait because the teams keep on winning and chorus keeps on singing great and get awards and the band's great. So we have a very, very long list of accolades that, you know, we'd like to recognize. I know that we were waiting for Mr. Tech. Right, but Mr. Plup is here, so we can start with music. All right, great. So we have this list of academic recognitions. And again, these are external recognitions, not recognitions from within our school or district, but from outside organizations as well as athletics. So I've asked somebody from the music department to share at least the music portion of it. And then I will follow up with the non-music academic recognitions that we've had.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Kevin Plup, band director at the high school. And I'd just like to say a couple of words in its recognitions of our students. So throughout all the hurdles that COVID could present, the outstanding students of the North Smithfield Music Department, both middle and high school, have proven to be a strong and steadfast in their quest to make music at the highest levels. Each week was a battle of COVID precautions and related absences, but through it all, these students persevered to display incredible musicianship. In this school year alone, the music students of grades six through twelve gave over twenty-seven public performances. And this does not include a night full of thirty holiday caroling appearances throughout North Smithfield in the dead of winter. That's an impressive amount of music making. These students are dedicated. They are learning important values of hard work and results. And it has been such a pleasure to lead these wonderful students this year. Their success is due to the incredible support you all give to this community in our attempts to make music at the highest level. Thank you for providing and supporting music for our community. Now we find ourselves at this wonderful time of year when we'd like to think back and recognize a number of ensemble benchmarks as well as individual students who have made remarkable achievements in music this year. From the high school, at music festivals, our adjudicated music festivals statewide, we've come away with superior ratings in all of our ensembles. And that includes concert band, chamber chorus, select choir, concert choir, and percussion ensemble, all achieving superior ratings, which means an academic score of ninety or above. The music department was fortunate enough to weather all the hurdles of getting ourselves to Disney this year and gave out three outstanding performances at the Disney World Resort. So thank you to your support. Thank you to the support of our parents for literally weathering all the hurdles to get us to Disney. And it was a wonderful time for all the students. We've had a number of students also make the all-state level of musicianship. So we had four students get to the Senior All-State Orchestra, Nate Como, Noah Dages, Matthew Denton, Olivia Verasami. The two students make it to the Junior Level All-State Band, Brianna Funier and Owen Priestley. Three students make it to All-State Senior Band, Brianna Goldberg, Grace Lane, Abby Svejny. And five students make it to All-State Mixed Choir Junior Level, Jonna Creighton, Alexandria Davio, Grace Alexovitz, Mia Remanke, sorry about that, Sophia Gregory. We've had three students make the All-State Treble Choir Senior Level, Katerina Brandau, Brianna Jakes, and Kira Mexavon. We had eight students make the Senior All-State Mix Choir, Theo Bazin, Gabe Curvo, Ryan Denton, Sarah Duffy, Caitlin Roden, Carla Sund, Elizabeth Kelly, and Rachel Reel. We had one outstanding choir member make the American Choral Directors Association's Eastern Division Honor Choir, and that was Theo Bazin. We had Abby Svejny on flute attend the Southern New England Honor Band. And just recently, we had three high school students attend the Remya Solo and Ensemble Festival where they achieved individual medals as soloists on their instruments. Abby Svejny on flute, Grace Lane on piano, and Owen Priestley on clarinet. At the middle school level, equally impressive, they had outstanding achievements with their ensembles at the Music in Parks Festival. Just recently, they went to Six Flags and had a performance there and got superior ratings. Concert band, superior rating ninety-five point five. The chorus, superior rating on ninety point seven. And the jazz band, superior rating ninety-three point five. They had an outstanding soloist award for jazz, Lucas Como on alto sax. They came away with the top award for the whole festival, which exemplifies attitude of positive support and outstanding personal behavior throughout the festival called the Esprit de Corps Award. So they took that home with great pride. So kudos to all the ensembles at the middle school. They had some students make All-State as well. Seven students made the All-State Elementary Chorus. That was Avery Crichton, Anna Kelly, Michaela LaFrance, Olivia Norden, Jaden Ortiz Allard, Aliyah Shaw, and Cameron Welch. It's two students make the Junior All-State Orchestra, A. M. Khan on bass clarinet and Sam Lane on trombone. They had one student make the All-State Junior Band, Jack Naradoe on clarinet. Four students made the All-State Mix Choir Junior Level, Anna Alekowitz, Deanna DeN, Ryan Dellinger, Zachary Simkins. And like I said, the Junior Choral Festival, the state adjudicated festival, chorus got a superior rating. And at the Junior Band Festival, the middle school concert band also got a superior rating. They also had six students just recently also go to the Solo Ensemble Festival. And all six solowed and got medals for their musicianship. Angelina Feliz on flute, Jasmine Kennel on flute, A. M. Khan on bass clarinet, Sam Lane on trombone, Jack Naradoe on clarinet, Paige O'Brien on trumpet. So it's a year of success both for individuals and ensembles, and we thank your support. Thanks for the time tonight.
Thank you. I can add to that impressive list with a few others. So this is, starting at the high school, our yearbook program won a bronze recognition for the Justin's National Yearbook Program of Excellence. Of course, we, the people, state champions competed in DC, Special Olympics. You know, the high school was a national banner unified school. And then DECA, our program for business marketing entrepreneurship. Our students came away at the Rhode Island State Competition, which, by the way, then they went on to attend the Atlantic Conference. They scored either first or second place in these categories apparel and accessories marketing, entrepreneurship, sports marketing, food marketing, principles of marketing, restaurant and food service management, and the Aspire Leadership Academy. Now, at the middle school, we also had our yearbook team also received the bronze award for the Justin's Program of Excellence. And our students competed in the Rhode Island Science Olympia. And we, our students took away second place in Mousetrap Vehicle, second place in Dynamic Planet, second place in Bio Process Lab, and third place in the solar system category. So arts, academics, our students are excelling and being recognized around the state as a center for excellence. Okay? Great. Still not done, Mr. Tech?
Come on up.
Okay, well, I promised you I'd be back at some point here with an update on sports. And sure enough, spring sports delivered. It delivered. This school year, sixteen years as athletic director, was probably the single-handedly most successful athletic year we've had. And I would say in the history of the school building as well, too. Given the just the amount of accolades, records, championships, division championships that were accomplished this year, I think it's a big kudos, first of all, to the support obviously by the school committee and administration of this district to put an emphasis on sports and to support it fully. But more, I would say, also to the coaches. Without great coaches and high standards by them, the kids wouldn't necessarily always achieve that except for them. And then I think the students themselves willingness to battle through what we've had with such a tumultuous school year in the sense of changes and regulations and stipulations and getting back to some sense of normalcy for them as well, too, with expanded sports seasons again and things of that nature, their resilience and perseverance, I thought, was on full display this year. So incredible performance by everyone, kind of a team effort together with that. Just some things to shout out. We'd be here all night if I did every single individual athlete and what they successfully have done. But looking at the fall, for example, you had boy soccer made another appearance, third time out of the last four years in the state finals. Football, even though in Division Three, moved in and made and qualified again for the semifinals. Girls cross country as a team qualified and went to the state meet. We've had some individual runners over the years, but it's been a very long time since we've had the actual team compete in the state championship. We did accomplish that this year. Girl soccer in Division Two made quarterfinal playoffs. Also, I want to highlight the fact that one of the seniors graduated, Sadie Crozier, from the class of two thousand twenty-two, set the all-time record for most goals scored, both for either a male or female soccer player in the history. What I don't think many people know, what's more impressive about that record, is she had a shortened condensed junior year and was only played half the amount of games. So with far less games than the individuals who had the previous record before, she was able to accomplish that also while wearing a mask and playing sports and doing all these other things that adversity that weren't necessarily done by others in the past. She still accomplished that record. So I thought that's a tremendous accomplishment for her as well, too. Not to be outdone, we moved into our winter sports. And in our winter sports, our boys basketball program made the quarterfinal playoffs. Boys hockey made the Division Two Quarterfinal Playoffs. Girls basketball went all the way to the Division Three State Finals game. We had also in that, we had some individual performances, such as we have an independent wrestler, Nick Marsaglia, who graduated as well, the class of two thousand twenty-two. He made it to the state meet, finishing fourth in his weight class overall in the entire state and was one match short of qualifying for the New England's as an independent wrestler. So kudos to Nicholas Marsaglia in that aspect. We had numerous participants, both on the boys and girls indoor track team make the state meet. And we also had Matt Stamelatos win the fifty-five meter indoor hurdles and is an actual state champion this year. But he wasn't to be outdone yet. We move now into your spring sports season as well, too. And in that, as I was saying earlier and a couple of months ago, I thought we had some strong spring teams. Every team made it well. Every single one of them, including our unified basketball team as well, too. That's the first time that I remember every single sport team making and qualifying for the playoffs. I thought that was an incredible accomplishment. But their accomplishments within the playoffs also stood out tremendously to me as well, too. So just a couple of those highlights is, first of all, our golf team competed as a team in the state championship golf match. That hasn't been done. I've been here twenty years in the district. It has not been done in twenty years. So you're going back at least somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five, thirty years since the last time we put the golf team as a complete team into the state championship. Again, we've had a couple of individuals over those years, but this was a complete team that qualified. And, you know, golf is that game of inches. And I was talking with the coach and they finished two strokes short of winning the division championship. They were two strokes short. And so a remarkable year for the golf team was incredible. Our boys tennis team made the Division Three Quarterfinal Playoffs. And really, one shout out to the tennis team is that they played with simply ten people on the roster. And eventually we got to eleven, so we had just enough to field the team and play out there. And so we even had some females join our boys team to help us fill out that roster. And we're able to qualify for the playoffs and push into the playoffs as well, too. Again, that's not easy to do when you're fielding, you have no injuries, no subs, no, no anything. You've got to have everyone show up each day, and they were able to do that. Our boys lacrosse team made it to the state championship final for the second year in a row. And they had only two losses in the regular season. So, you know, it's hard enough to do it one time, but to do it a second time in a row in the following year after you graduate seniors and have to try to repeat that feat was impressive. Girls lacrosse team, state championship finals as well, too, undefeated regular season. That's never happened. We've never won the division in girls lacrosse history since we've had it. We did that this year. And unfortunately, we came up one goal short in the state championship game, but a hard-fought twelve to eleven defeat. But nothing to not be proud about and exciting the way they represented us. So an eighteen and one overall record for the girls lacrosse program that was accomplished. Baseball had a single loss during the regular season, won the Division, Division Three Regular Season Title, and then took it to the final game of the final season and beat classical in our. and then took it to the final game of the final season and beat classical and are now your Division Three State Champions. Boys volleyball. Boys volleyball undefeated regular season, undefeated in the playoffs, and ultimately to a state championship in the Division Two. So they finished a perfect 20 and 0 overall. So that was pretty exciting. Boys and girls outdoor track team, which have now become our largest teams in the entire district here for us. Once again, actually came in second place on the girl's side for a division title. They fell just short of that and our boys came in third. So they are now starting to move up into not just competing locally within some of the smaller schools, but actually at the bigger meets, the division championships and your class championships, and they are scoring. We went to the state meet. We had multiple participants in the state meet. At one point, I sent a picture to Mr. St. Jean at one point, and it had the current standings in the state meet about halfway through, and I think I sent it to you as well, Mr. Lombardi. And I was laughing because the three schools that they highlighted in that middle of the meet were Wasal Academy, Bishop Hendrickson, and North Smithfield. And that was really exciting to see that. One of the things I'm most proud about is that obviously in North Smithfield, we get our students. And so it's our students, our students only that represented that. And some of the other schools, the private schools, they obviously attract kids from multiple communities. So it's multiple communities being represented. And then there's good old little North Smithfield up there with the big boys, so to speak. And I thought it was really cool to see that. Ultimately, we had finished fifth overall among all the schools in the state meet. So that was pretty exciting to see that. We had some great performances in there. We had kids qualify for the New England State Meet. Six of them from North Smithfield went up to the New England State Meet. Matt Stamelatos, we have been known as the hurdle champions here in the state of Rhode Island. That is known now. North Smithfield is known for that. In the finals, which has the eight top hurdlers going, we placed first, second, and sixth overall. And Matt Stamelatos won the 100-meter, 110, sorry, hurdles. And then not to be outdone, he returned to the 300-meter hurdles and won that as well, too. So he won two more state championships at that. Adam Dubois, a golfer of ours who decided to throw the javelin, finished second in the state of Rhode Island with a one month of training to do that. So that was very impressive. And Nicholas Lammerow, he finished second in the high jump as well, too. And he actually tied the state champion for height. And the way they determine that is who hit that height first. So the person who won it hit that height with one less attempt than Nick did, but they tied at the exact same height, but the determination goes to less attempts to it. So I say he tied the state champion. They say he came in second, but he's only a sophomore, so he'll be back. So the, the future is very bright. Jacqueline Durande in the high jump for the girls qualified, broke the school record or tied the school record at 4:11 for the high jump and then qualified and went to the New England's. And at the New England's, we did have some really outstanding performances. And Matt Stamelatos came in third, you know, 300-meter hurdles in the New England State Meet. So quite, quite impressive. With the state championships that Matt Stamelatos, three of them this year and one from last year. He now is the, has the most all-time individual state championships taken. Donna Ferro, who used to be one of our gymnasts way back in the day. She had three individual state titles. Well, Matt Stamelatos has four now up there on that wall, too. So I mean, the amount of banners we've had. It's just been, it's been incredible. And I'll leave you with this. What I, when I know that we've made that next jump, so to speak, in athletics was at the boys volleyball state championship match, I was in the court right before the game started and the executive director of the Rhode Island Scholastic League, Michael Loney was there and I was standing next to him and he turned to me and he said, you're with me to the bitter end, huh? For the very last final day of sports, you're still going here? I said, yes, I am. And he said, you know, it's interesting. He says, we just expect North Smithfield to be here now. And that was, to me, was kind of a revelation of how far we've come where, you know, it was, you know, my first look over as AD, it was, it was a glorious day if we qualified for a playoff. If we had a winning record, that was a good year for us. And to have the Scholastic League mention that their expectation is to see North Smithfield in the playoffs and in multiple playoffs on a yearly basis, just kind of shows where we've taken this and the expectations that the state has for our district as well to, to be competing all the time and to represent itself at the highest quality. And so I don't know, I could go on all night with it, but I gotta say, just this year, while it may have been long, it was very rewarding. Soul-filling in a way to see all the accomplishments that students have made. And we look forward to what next year is going to bring and, and the next few years here, because I think we have a standard now. And so I'm hoping that continues on. So other than that, great year.
Thank you, Mr. Tech.
Thank you.
So as I said, I just wanted to put that on the agenda to recognize our great students for their extracurricular activity. I'm proud of all the students, but I just wanted to recognize these students for their extra efforts to join a team, club, chorus, band during the last year. And to think about it, it's truly unbelievable that we have so much talent in a small school. This is a small school district. And to send that many teams to the state finals, a lot of determination. And I have to say, any of my interactions with others from other districts is always positive about the athletes, coaches, choir, band, clubs. It's, it's really, I'm really proud of all these things that, that are being done. You know, it's, it's not only about who wins. It's about teamwork. It's about who competed and how hard they tried. So I'm very proud of this class overall and everything they've accomplished. So thank you.
And I think we also have to thank the, the coaches and the band director and the choral directors and Matt for all the work that you do. I can't even imagine everything that you, us do to make this work, but they get the most out of the kids. And I think that is just wonderful. I feel so proud tonight to be part of North Smithfield. It's wonderful. Thank you.
And I guess I also just want to even add that the size of each of these programs means that most of these students are not just in one, right? They're probably in the music and in the academics and in the sports. And that's what school systems should be doing is developing well-rounded young individuals. And so I could not be more proud of, of all of the students and the coaches and the directors. And thank you.
I'll just reiterate that so many thoughts went through tonight that I remember when we, we put the track program through and we said, it's going to do well. It's going to do well here in town. Matt, you said it. Now it's the highest number of participants we have, which is kind of, that's just what we thought it was going to be. And it was, and by the way, we're going to expand. We're going to have a little more of the weights next year, too, hopefully for our hammer rock javelin throw. And the other thing, I don't know how else you feel is it's quite, it does age you though, because you remember some of these, like, I remember some of the kids, I remember Adam Dubois, Cole was little. And Adam, and he was little and he came for the free throw shooting competition years ago. And now he's like, he's like the javelin champion. And I know him and he's, he's like so much taller than me. And I can remember he's this little kid. It's, it's, it really makes you realize time goes by. But again, it's great. And I just want to reiterate something that Jim said, too. It's important that the kids compete. So even if you don't so-called win in terms of the placement, I think it's important to compete. You learn a lot from competing wherever you are and just doing the best you can. So we do rec, we tend to recognize the winners a lot, but it is important just to compete. And even if your name's not here, but you competed, that's a good thing to do.
I will be sharing this list in an email to all the parents and posting it on social media or in the website because we have so much to celebrate and still so many students that we're so proud of.
Yes. And I will be sending it to the town council prior to our budget hearing.
Good idea.
Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.